Supervisors, 2016 Annual Organizational Meeting. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Ms. Bomke, here. Mr. Cavalier?
Here.
Mrs. Mauer?
Here.
Mr. Milde?
Here.
Ms. Sellers?
Here.
Mr. Snellings?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. County Administrator, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd ask everyone to stand for an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. I have a prayer this morning in the words of Saint Richard of Chichester. "O merciful Redeemer, Friend, and Brother, may we know you more clearly, love you more dearly, and follow you more nearly, day by day." Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have a following. I have a brief statement, and after that, I will open the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Today's first order of business will be the election of the Chairman. Once the nominations are complete, the Board will vote in the order in which nominations were received. The floor is now open for nominations for Chairman of the Board of Supervisors.
I nominate Bob Thomas as Chairman.
Mrs. Bomke nominates Mr. Thomas. Are there other nominations?
I nominate Paul Milde.
Mr. Cavalier nominates Mr. Milde. Are there other nominations?
I nominate Mr. Cavalier.
Mr. Snellings nominates Mr. Cavalier. Any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. The Board is now voting on Mrs. Bomke's nomination of Mr. Thomas for Chairman. Please cast your votes. Motion passes four to three. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
I'll nominate Jack Cavalier for Vice Chair. We have to reorganize first.
If we can, Mr. Chairman. We'll elect your Vice Chairman, and then we'll take a quick break and do the rewiring.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for your vote of confidence this year. I look forward to representing the Board. I had the privilege of serving under three different chairmen in my first four years. Learned a lot from all of them, most notably, Mr. Snellings. Over this past year, I've really admired the way you've represented everybody. You're always very ceremonial. You have just the right amount of humor, and most of all, you're always impeccable whenever you're in front of the public representing us. And I know the entire Board from last year really appreciates the leadership you showed for us, so thank you very much. We'll now open the floor for nominations for Vice Chairman.
I'll nominate Jack Cavalier.
We have Jack Cavalier nominated by Mr. Milde.
I nominate Laura Sellers.
We have Laura Sellers nominated by Ms...our newest Supervisor. Welcome, Ms. Mauer.
I'd like to withdraw.
So noted. That leaves one nomination on the floor. Are there any other nominations? Okay, we'll now vote for Vice Chairman, Laura Sellers. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. That motion carries seven to zero. We'll now take a short recess so we can readjust the dice. Before we go to number two on the agenda, I think the County Administrator would like to go over the additions to the agenda because there's a couple of things that are going to be important before we get to his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. In your add-on folder, we have a number of additions, things that have come in since the Board's agenda was published. Item 3A would be appointments to the Public Day School Committee with the School Board. That'd be appointment of Board members to that. Item 3B would be additional appointments to the various BACCs. One would be if the Board would like to have a proxy to the FRA, Fredericksburg Regional Alliance, appointments to the Stafford Technology and Research Park Board of Directors. And then, Mr. Snellings has submitted Ms. Heather Steffel as a nominee for the Board of Zoning Appeals, representing the Hartwood District. Item number 3B, we do have a vacancy, will have a vacancy in the Hartwood District for the Utilities Commission. And then, item number seven, Mr. Snellings has asked for a proposed resolution, R-16-35, limiting the terms of Chairman on various BACCs. There are also handouts in your add-on folder as we've received the BACC applications. We've included those in your handout folder. We also have one closed-session item. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For some reason, I don't have an add-on folder.
And just so everybody knows, I think 3A and 3B are backwards on the additions and deletions. 3A is actually the BACC.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is number two, Legislative, the 2016 Board Meeting Calendar.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the calendar is laid out before you. We have mostly a typical schedule of first and third Tuesday, but there are a number of exceptions that I would draw the Board's attention to. R-16-01 would adopt the calendar for the year. April would have three Board meetings, an additional Board meeting for the Budget Public Hearing. Because this is a reassessment year, and assuming that the reassessment will be more than 1% over current values, which we think is a safe assumption, even though we don't have final numbers yet, that's a 30-day advertising requirement. And so, to build that into the schedule, we are proposing to have a third meeting in April. We would have the typical summer recess meeting, first Tuesday in July, going to the third Tuesday in August, and then two meetings in November, one meeting in December. And then, at the bottom of the page there, you'll see we've tried to work the calendar around Election Day, Stafford Public Schools Spring Break, the VACO Conference, and then the BACC Holiday Event, which is typically the first Tuesday in December. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion for R-16-01?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion unseconded. Please cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Next item is 3A, Legislative Appointments to Boards, Authorities, Committees, and Commissions. Let's go through the ones in the add-on package first, and then we'll go through the packet that we already had in our previous Board package. So, the first item would be a proxy to the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance. Can you explain that one, Mr. Romano?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The Fredericksburg Regional Alliance has advised participating localities that there is not a provision under the law for an alternate, in the sense of a typical alternate, but if the Board would like to, if the governing bodies that participate in FRA, they can...you can designate a proxy. And so, this would be at the discretion of the governing body. So, the Board would appoint a member. Mr. Cavalier has served as the Board's representative. You could also have a proxy from among yourselves, in addition to your principal member to the FRA Board, but it's at the Board's discretion.
Okay. So, let's go ahead and handle the primary member to FRA first. So, Mr. Cavalier, I assume you're willing to reserve?
Yes, and this was a recent bylaw change with the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance, brought up by another locality, that sometimes their people didn't show up at the meeting. So, it allows for another one of our members to be present at the meeting if they so choose, but only vote if the primary is not present. And that ensures, better ensures that we have a quorum at the meeting. The same doesn't hold true in the private sector, so this is only an allowance for the public sector.
Okay, thank you. Last year, we motioned and voted on each one of these sheets. Would it be appropriate to do the same thing this year? I thought that went pretty well.
I think there would be, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for our primary member for Fredericksburg Regional Alliance at this time.
I nominate Jack Cavalier.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Snellings. Please cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, and thanks for serving. Okay, do we have somebody who's interested in being the proxy member to the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance?
I would be interested.
Anybody else? Okay, can I have that in form of a motion?
I nominate Nicole.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mauer. Cast your votes. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, the second item is the Stafford Tech and Research Park Board of Directors. Currently, there's two of our members serving on that Board, Mr. Melde and myself.
I withdraw from that Board, actually, so that makes it easier.
Mr. Milde is willing to give up his seat. Is anybody interested in taking that position?
I'd like to make that call. I will defer to Laura for all seats.
Do we have two people interested in taking seats?
I am interested in the Stafford Tech and Research Park Board. I believe Jack is as well.
Okay, if that's the case, I can probably give up my seat as well. I think we've gotten the Board to a point where they're actually ready to come to the Board of Supervisors and execute, hopefully. We're crossing our fingers, so it might be an inappropriate time to get two new people on there and get some fresh ideas. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion for...
I'd move that Wendy and Laura be our representatives on that Board.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bomke. Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, the next one is to nominate Ms. Heather Steffel to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the alternate position, from alternate to representing the Hartwood District. So, I think we probably should do the whole BZA at the same time to make it easy.
I don't think...
Motion for approval.
Okay, so that motion would be to approve...
Be for both.
Right. Heather Steffel, also in the George Washington District. That would be for Mr. Stephen Apicella.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Bob Gibbons as an alternate.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion would now be Heather Steffel for Hartwood, Stephen Apicella for George Washington, Robert Grimes for Griffiths-Widewater, and then we had an opening for alternate, and we are going to put Bob Gibbons in there. Do I have a second for that motion?
I think Laura just seconded that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so we have a second. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Okay, so now we'll go back to the front of the packet. The first one is the ADA Grievance Committee. All the members of that body wish to be reappointed. I'll entertain a motion.
Some of.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Sellers. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Next one is the Advisory Board for Law Enforcement Towing. And I think the late break in change there, Ms. Bailey now, is wishing to be reappointed. So, the whole slate would be reappointed, and Deputy, or now Sheriff Decatur will replace the previous sheriff. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mauer. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Next up is Advisory Board for Private Trespass. The same as the previous one, the whole slate is up, and Mr. Bailey, sorry, does wish to be reappointed. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bomke. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Next one up is the Agricultural and PDR Committee. The notes I have is that we were still waiting for confirmation from the George Washington District, as well as the Griffiths-Widewater District. Have we still not heard from them?
Mr. McCleavy from Griffiths-Widewater does wish to be reappointed.
Okay. And we have vacancy to fill in Rock Hill, and that would be by Mr. Tom Gregory. And we still have a vacancy in Garrisonville. And, okay. And since we haven't heard from my member, I'm going to ask in our motion that we leave the George Washington seat open at the moment as well, so I can confirm or find somebody who's willing to serve. Okay, so do we have a motion for Ag-PDR leaving George Washington and Garrisonville open? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bomke. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Architectural Review Board. The Architectural Historian was up for renewal, and she wishes to be reappointed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Bomke, seconded by Ms. Mauer. Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Architectural Review Board for Centerport, no action is required. The Board of Building Code Appeals. We have two members that wish to be reappointed. Do we know about the rest of the members?
No, sir. We've not had a response from the others yet.
So, should we probably defer action on this one entirely, because we don't want to appoint two members, and then they can't have a meeting? What would you recommend on that?
I will bring it back next time. I think that'd be a good idea, sir.
Okay, so we will defer that one.
They don't have a regular meeting.
Yeah, when it...they don't meet very often.
They meet on an as-needed basis, so two weeks is for...the 19th would be fine.
Okay. The next one is Board of Social Services. Currently, Supervisor Snellings serves on there for the Board of Supervisors, and I'm not sure his wish to be...
I do wish to be reappointed.
Okay, do we have a motion for that?
Some move.
Motion by Ms. Mauer, seconded by Ms. Sellers. Cast your vote. Tally the vote.
Oh, sorry.
Recast your vote, please. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we already did the Board of Zoning Appeals. Next one is the Central Rappahannock Regional Library Board of Trustees. No action is necessary on that one. Citizens Tag, no action required on that one. Civilian Military Community Relations Council. Currently, Mr. Cavalier and myself serve on that one, and our terms are expired. And I think we've both shown a willingness to be flexible if somebody else wanted to step up and do those two.
I would be interested.
Okay, Ms. Mauer's interested in one of the spots?
It's time to ask what you guys do.
This body currently doesn't do a lot. I think in the past, when Mr. Melde was on there, and there was a lot of brack talk going on and jay-los, they may have talked a little bit more. But currently, this one, I think, consists of basically a quarterly get-together, just to make sure we're all communicating. I'm not sure if Mr. Cavalier's had a different experience than that. It's pretty low-level, yes.
So, it's not...
It's the same, like a regional steering committee that...
Very similar, very similar.
It's the same.
Right.
It must be the same thing, then.
Just not calling it that.
Yeah, just calling it something else.
Okay.
Why aren't they calling it the same, what the Marine Corps calls it? That's what's been confusing me when I...the emails.
It's different.
It is called Q-R-E-S-C, or something like that.
That is...is this the same group, or...
It's not the same group, okay, so that then...
Well, can we ask Mr. Rudy to clarify, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Tim Burdi, Deputy County Administrator. To Mr. Milde's question, it is not the same group. They're a group that was set up well before my time, quite frankly, with the county. They've been meeting, as stated, quarterly on a regular basis. It's really a social exercise to get base members from Apie Hill, Dogren, and Quantico together.
Okay, so we...it's quarterly, and it's in the evening, yes. So, we have interest from Supervisor Sellers and Supervisor Mauer. Anybody else? Okay, do we have a motion to that effect? We have a motion. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Milde. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Next one is the CPMT, the Community Policy and Management Team. Currently, Ms. Sellers serves for the Board. Mr. Tigner serves as the Citizen Representative, and I believe he wants to be reconsidered, or reappointed, and there's going to be a new member, I believe, for the private provider. Do they have to have a meeting to formally ask us to appoint somebody? Is that what I'm reading in the notes here?
I think that's the...I'm not sure there's a requirement, Mr. Chairman, but I think that's their preference. If we could bring the, other than Ms. Sellers' appointment, but bring the other two appointments back at your February meeting, I think that'd be good.
Okay, so we can entertain a motion to keep Laura on there if we have that motion.
Well, I do want to put this out there, that maybe just push it all to February. I have a conflict on Monday to make these meetings. I have to rearrange my whole day to get to that. So, if somebody else would like to make these, or if we can change the CPMT time.
My preference would be, because I served on that before you, and when you came on, and your background and your skills and what you do in your day job is perfect for this position, so maybe we defer this at the next meeting, see if they can adjust the schedule a little bit, because I think it'd be really good to have you on there.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll defer the whole slate on that one. Okay, the next one is the Economic Development Authority. Ms. Sellers wishes to appoint Heather Hagerman to fill Garrisonville District, and Mr. Griffin would then move to the Rock Hill District, since he has now relocated to that district. Mr. Milde made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mauer. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next one is Embry-Millau Community Development Authority. I believe Ms. Mauer has resigned her position, so therefore, there's a vacancy. I don't think we have any applicants currently, unless somebody has a nomination from the floor on that one.
I'll have one for the next meeting.
Okay, but we can reappoint. It says, Mr...I'm not sure how to say that, Bach. Mr. Beach. And it says, Mrs. Sellers, yep, indicated desire to be reappointed. So, we can do those two individuals today, and then we'll just fill the vacancy later, if that's okay. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second by Ms. Bomke. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. We have the Fire Prevention Code Board of Appeals. Mr. Gerald Snellings indicates his desire to be reappointed. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Motioned and seconded by Ms. Sellers. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Fredericksburg Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. Currently, all the slots are expired. And who do we have on there currently? I think we have Ms. Sellers and Mr. Milde, and then County Administrator, and I believe there's an alternate for the County Administrator as well. And then, we have two alternates, so we need to fill these slots.
Obviously, you all know, I told you, I'd like to stay on there.
Okay.
And also, Mr. Chair, I am interested in serving on that committee, and I was wondering if the Board would consider our County Administrator still attending those meetings because of his knowledge and experience, but actually filling his seat with one of the elected supervisors.
I'll second that.
So, Ms. Sellers, you still wish to be on there as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So, what's the Board's thoughts on that?
I'd like to throw my name in the hat on that, too. I'd like to be a member of FAMPO, having been on that for 12 years, so I think it's time.
So, I hear at least five people saying they're okay with the fact that we put a third supervisor on there.
No.
Does anybody want to speak against that?
I would speak against that. I like, I think the setup is smart, the way it is now, and I think Anthony or Keith should be full-fledged members on that committee. I would just switch, but that's my, I don't know that it...that's just my thought on it. I wouldn't support that.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. Melde. The thing is politicized enough. If you get all politicians, then now you're going to have a real problem. The one reason you have the County Administrator and City Council, City Manager on there is to keep continuity at elections, and that's what we need, so I will not vote to replace the County Administrator.
Okay. Since we have more people than we have spots, we'll handle it similarly to the nominations. So, as I heard the names, we'll vote in that order, and when we get to the third supervisor, if you are not inclined to do the supervisor, I would vote against that, that person, and if that motion fails, then we could entertain putting the County Administrator back in there. So, the first person we need a motion for would be Mr. Milde to reserve on FAMPO.
Some move.
That's my move, unseconded. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Okay, that motion passes seven to zero. Ms. Bomke spoke up second, so do we have a motion for Ms. Bomke?
Some move.
Motion is second. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. That motion passes four to three. And Ms. Sellers spoke up third, so I have a motion for Ms. Sellers.
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Please cast your votes. Tally the vote. That motion passes four to three. Now, the County Administrator alternate, should we leave that the way it is, or should we put Anthony in that spot? Are there any bylaws from FAMPO that would guide us on that as well?
You have, the county has three seats, Mr. Chairman, so you'd want to have three alternates.
Okay.
You don't need a County Administrator alternate, since the County Administrator doesn't have a seat on FAMPO, so I think you'd probably want to have three Board alternates.
Okay. So, Mr. Cavalier, you were next on the list. Are you willing to serve as an alternate? Okay, do we have a motion for that?
Some move.
And cast your vote. Tally the vote. Passes seven to zero, and I guess we need two more alternates.
I would entertain the County Administrator serving as an alternate.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the County Administrator to serve as an alternate. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. And the last seat for an alternate, I guess it's currently me, if anybody else is interested that hasn't already jumped on the FAMPO bandwagon. Okay, so I would entertain a motion for me to continue as an alternate on FAMPO.
Some move.
Do I have a second? Motioned and seconded. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Did you get that, Marcia? We already did the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance. Now, we're going to the George Washington Regional Commission. Although these bodies tend to meet on the same night, they do not have to be members of FAMPO. Okay, Ms. Sellers would like to stay on that.
I do not wish to stay on.
Okay, Mr. Snellings would like somebody else to serve?
I'd be willing to serve in his place.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll stay on as an alternate, if that's okay. And Mr. Milde, would you entertain staying as an alternate?
Sure.
Okay. So, the slate for this would be Ms. Sellers and Mrs. Bomke as the primaries, and myself and Mr. Melde as alternate. Do we have a motion?
One comment. Mr. Melde, would you like to serve?
No.
Okay.
Some move.
Yep, do I have a second?
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Jermaine County College Board, no action is required. Hidden Lake Service District, no action is required. The Historical Commission serves at the pleasure, and no action is required. The IDA of Stafford and Stanton, Virginia, no action is required. The Local Finance Board, OPEB, Ms. Bomke is the Board of Supervisors member, and...
I'm happy to stay on. If somebody else would like it, I'd be willing to give it up.
Can you give a brief description of what that body does?
OPEB is basically monitoring all the investments of our other post-employment benefits, and Ms. Parrott and Ms. Rudy are also members of that. And we meet basically quarterly, and they'll work around your schedule. And it's basically just making sure that our investments are in positive mode, and that we're making progress, and that everything's intact.
Okay. Anybody else interested in that position? Okay, do I have a motion for Ms. Bomke?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next one is the Military Affairs Council. Currently, I am the primary, and Mr. Cavalier is the alternate. That one meets quarterly. I believe it's a Thursday afternoon at around 3:00 or 3:30 at the Chamber of Commerce office. I've been on there. It's been, been actually a good body to be on. Not all of the jurisdiction send somebody, but you always have all the base commanders in the region there, so they, you know, we have their ear if there's something going on. It's kind of another channel to, to be able to speak to them. So it's, it's very useful. I would re-serve, but I'm not wedded to the idea of somebody else. Want us a chance. I've had two years down there, so.
I'd like an opportunity.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
What about Jack?
Um, Jack's an alternate.
Does he want to stay as an alternate?
I'll give my position up.
Okay, so I have Wendy interested in the primary. Do we have somebody interested in being an alternate?
I'll do the alternate.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next one is the Parks and Recreation Commission. We had three vacancies. Mr. Heap desires to be reappointed. That's Griffiths-Widewater. Mrs. Maurer wishes to appoint Michelle Woodman, and my appointee would like to stay on as well. So do I have a motion to make those three appointments?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sellers. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to one. Next up is the Planning Commission. We have three vacancies there as well. Mr. Boswell and Mr. Cullen indicate they wish to be reappointed, and Mrs. Maurer wishes to appoint Mrs. Ms. Crystal?
Vanuk.
Vanuk, yeah.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion for that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sellers. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. And the next one is PRTC and VRE. We always kind of treat this as the same, and we always appoint the same members to both, but that's not necessarily, doesn't have to be that way. Currently, Mr. Milde serves, and I serve as the primaries, and Mrs. Baumke and Ms. Sellers serve as the alternates. I'm willing on VRE, if somebody wanted to be involved in one of the more regional bodies, I'd be willing to step aside, but I would like to stay on PRTC, just because I'm on the Executive Committee, and I think sending a new person up there and sticking them right in the Executive Committee would be, it would put them in an awkward position. So if, if somebody wanted to do VRE, I would ask that we appoint two separate slates. If nobody's interested in that, then we could keep it the same.
Wait a minute. This, this particular panel, though, on this page, represents VRE and PRTC?
Yeah, it's always kind of been lumped into one.
Bobby, I just think that you should stay.
Okay.
Again, this is one of those, like, FAMPA things. Takes years to figure out what's going on. I mean, if you want to put someone new in there, that's fine, but maybe an alternate could come, get acclimated, and look at doing this next year. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I would like to stay. I just also, you know, if somebody else really felt, you know, strongly that they'd like to try this one, I'd be willing to step aside, but I would be, you know, I would like to stay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to remove my name as the alternate. Over this last year, I've not been able to attend any meetings as the alternate because I have an AR CASA board meeting on that night, so.
Right, that's a good point. This one is a Friday meeting. It used to be 9:30. We moved it back to nine, but we still haven't really managed to get out of there much before noon or 12:30, so it's kind of tough for those of us with day jobs. So if you're going to sign up to be the alternate to that, just be aware of that.
Well, and I'm sorry, I want to make sure I clarify. My commitment was with PRTC as the alternate.
Right.
So it wasn't the VRE, it was the PRTC component, but they seem to go together, so, yeah.
You're actually on both.
Right.
You're actually our alternate to VRE.
Right, so I think I should be removed from both.
Okay. And PRTC meets on Thursday nights.
Right.
The first Thursday of the month.
Correct.
So do I have somebody interested in being the alternate to those two? Wow.
Wow, no.
Don't everybody speak, that's actually a, it's a very good board to be on, and it affects our budget, trust me. PRTC is, you know, multiple millions of dollars in a deficit, and Ms. Sellers went last night, and I'm sure it was a lively conversation, but it's, it's very important, and it does affect the amount of money we have to pay in subsidy to those two organizations, so.
Only thing worse than FAMPA is PRTC.
It's even, it's even more important than that. It actually, it's our ga, it's how we get our gas tax. Our membership there is required in order for us to collect 2.1% gas tax, which we've been using to fund transportation improvements all over Stafford for about 20 years, so.
I'll, I'll stay as the alternate, like, VRE alternate as well.
So we still have one spot for an alternate, Mr. Chairman?
Nobody else wants to be an alternate?
If the gentleman to my right. All right. I'll, I'll throw myself on that grenade.
Okay, so we will keep it the same, except we will substitute Mrs. Maurer in for Mrs. Baumke as the, one of the alternates. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved. Do I have a second?
I don't yet.
Please cast your votes. Tally the votes. The motion passes seven to zero. Next one is the Potomac Watershed Roundtable. I've been on this one, this was one of my, hey, you're the new guy, you get this one. So it's been four years for me. It's a quarterly meeting, meets at different parts in the region. I would really like if somebody else could take this one over. Mr. Milde is the alternate. I don't know if...
I did it for eight years.
Yep.
And it means it takes almost a whole day on Friday. It seems like when it meets outside of our area, it can be, it's...
When it's not closed.
Really neat, and you serve with paraffin supervisors and all kinds of heavy hitters, especially if you have environmental...
I'll, I'll put my hat in. Put my name in the hat for that one if no one else wants it.
I'll stay on as alternate.
Okay. So do I have a motion for Ms. Baumke and Mr. Milde as the alternate?
So move.
Moved and seconded by Ms. Maurer. Please cast your votes. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. No action is required for the Rappahannock Emergency Medical Services Council. The next is the Rappahannock Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors. We have two people that are expiring, and Ms. Musselman wishes to be reappointed, and we just need to know what Supervisor Snellings wishes is on this one.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Rappahannock Area Alcohol Safety Action Program, no action is required. Rappahannock Area Community Services Board, no action is required. The Rappahannock Community Criminal Justice Board, Mr. Romanello's term expired in December, and I'm assuming he wishes to be reappointed. Do we have a motion for that?
So move.
Motioned and seconded. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Next is the Rappahannock Juvenile Detention Commission. Ms. Collins is an alternate to the County Administrator and is up for reappointment. Is she willing to continue to serve?
She's quite willing, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. Do we have a motion for that?
So move.
Moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Maurer. Cast your votes, please. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. The Rappahannock Regional Criminal Justice Academy Board of Directors. We have two people expiring. We actually, obviously have a new sheriff, so we need to put him in for former Sheriff Jett, and Mr. Romanello, I'm assuming, since you're the only County Administrator we have, would like to continue to serve on that. Do we have a motion for that?
So move.
Moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Next is the Rappahannock Regional Jail Authority Board. Sheriff Decatur will fill the seat by, vacated by former Sheriff Jett, and I believe everyone else is at the pleasure of the board, so that's the only action we need to take. Do we have a motion for that?
So move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Ms. Sellers. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Passes seven to zero. Next is the Rappahannock Regional Solid Waste Management Board. Currently, we have seats held by Mr. Milde and Mr. Snellings, and I am the alternate, so we need to decide on those three positions.
Mr. Chairman, I no longer wish to serve.
I'd like to serve.
Okay, Mr. Snellings would like to vacate his seat. Mr. Cavalier would like to step up to the plate on that one. Mr. Milde, would you like to continue?
It's, it's a tradition that the Aquia District Supervisor...
Beautiful.
...make that seat.
Okay.
Because it's in my district.
And anybody...
The answer is no. But I feel like it should, I should.
Anybody interested in being the alternate for that? Okay, I'll continue to do that as well. Do we have a motion for Mr. Milde, Mr. Cavalier, myself? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Maurer. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Next is the Rappahannock River Basin Commission. This is similar to the Potomac Roundtable. This is the one that Mr. Hubbell used to love to go to, and took me to Richmond a couple times to attend this one. So this is the same situation where I've done it for four years. If somebody else would like to do that, I would highly encourage that. It's another regional body where you get to interact with people from eight or nine different counties, and if you're interested in stormwater, this is kind of where we hear about some of this stuff first, so. Anybody interested in that one?
Well, since I have a lot of stormwater issues in my district, if you would like for me to take your seat and you want to be the alternate, that would, I would be willing to do that.
So move.
Okay, that'd be great. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Next one is the Rappahannock Youth Services and Group Home Commission. Term of the office is for three years. Ms. Donna Kraus, her position is being expired, and I hope she wishes to be reappointed. Okay, that's an affirmative. Do we have a motion for that?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Next one is the Stafford Regional Airport Authority. We have two seats expiring. Both members wish to be reappointed. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, Stafford Tech and Research Park, I believe we have everything we need on that one. We already did it. The Telecommunications Commission, all the seats are up for expiration, and everybody's willing to be reappointed.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Maurer. Please cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Thurman Brisbane Center, there's no action required. For the Utilities Commission, there's some action required on this one. Mrs. Maurer wishes to appoint Mr. Mike McKee for the Rockhill District. Ms. Joyce Arnt wishes to be reappointed for the Griffiths-Widewater District. Mr. William Tigler wishes to be reappointed for the George Washington District. So we have those three that want to be reappointed. Mr. Dunn no longer wishes to serve for the Aquia District, and Mr. Milde would like to appoint Ms. Mickey Kwiatkowski for the Aquia District. And then Mr. John Harris wishes to not be reappointed for Hartwood. So the motion would be for those four people and to leave a vacancy in Hartwood to be filled at a later date.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next is the Wetlands Chesapeake Bay Board. We have one expiring, expiring term. Mr. Anthony Pinault wishes to be reappointed.
So moved.
And just so everybody knows, we do have two at-large positions that we could fill that have vacancies. So we have a motion.
Second.
And seconded. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Widewater Community Development Authority, I believe there is no action there, and we're actually waiting on that body to be dissolved, I believe. And the last one is the Workforce Investment Board, which requires no action. Okay, Marcia, thank you for putting that together. I know calling a couple hundred people, trying to find out if they wanted to be reappointed, and just trying to get them on the phone is, is very tough, so I know we all appreciate your efforts on that. Is there anything I missed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is 3B, Appointment to the Board of Supervisors Standing We'll handle the add-on item first, which was the Public Day School Committee. This is something that kind of, kind of came out of CPMT, where the costs of the private day schools were spiraling out of control, and we were trying to figure out how to best maximize the private day school that we have, that partnership with the schools. And as you'll notice or remember, we are pushing some legislation in Richmond. This came out of that body as well. I had started on the, that body, and then Ms. Sellers replaced me, and I'm assuming she would like to continue to do that. We're kind of at a critical point with finally getting some traction in Richmond, so you willing to re, re-serve on that one? Okay?
Yeah, you want me to? I'll give it up, though.
Sorry, no takers. So do we have a motion for that?
So move.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Please cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, the order I have on the agenda is the Bylaws Committee is next. I believe currently I'm serving on that with Ms. Baumke. Do we wish to make any changes there?
I'm willing to give up my seat.
Any takers? No takers. Okay, so do we have a motion to keep that one the same?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Next one is Community and Economic Development Committee. Currently, Mr. Milde, myself, and Mr. Cavalier serve on that. Is there any interest to change that up at all?
I am interested in that committee.
I'll give up my seat.
Thanks, I'd, I'll keep mine if I already told you that in an email.
Is anybody else interested? I could, I could be flexible on that one as well.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to.
Okay.
Just right now.
So we would have Mr. Cavalier, myself going off, and we would have Mr. Snellings and Mrs. Maurer going on, and Paul continuing to serve. If we're good with that, and just need a motion?
So move.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Finance Audit and Budget Committee, currently consists of Laura, Jack, and myself. Do we wish to change that up at all?
Mr. Chairman, I'm interested in serving on that committee as well.
Okay.
I'm willing to give up my seat on FAB.
Okay. Mr. Cavalier, would you like to continue to serve?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else interested?
I would like to serve, but I'll, I'll yield to the others.
Okay, so we have one vacancy, and we have three people, and then in order to make that work, I would have to withdraw from the Finance Audit and Budget Committee, which I'm okay with.
So who do we have right now?
Would be Mrs. Maurer, Mr. Cavalier, and Mrs. Baumke.
Okay, I would rather that you serve on that than me.
Are you sure?
I don't need that for you.
Right, no, I think it's more important for you to be on there.
Okay with that? Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, do we have a motion for that?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, cast your vote. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next one is the Infrastructure Committee. Currently, we have Mr. Snellings, Mr. Milde, and Mr. Cavalier. Do we wish to change that one up at all?
Mr. Chairman, I've been on since it was inception, and I think it's time for me to step aside and get some fresh ideas in there.
Okay, Mr. Snellings?
I have two, but because of my, FAMPA and VRE, it makes, it's a perfect match for those two other boards. I'd like to stay on.
Okay.
I would like to serve on that. Oh, did you say that as well, Laura?
Yeah. It's okay, that's...
Okay, I heard Ms. Sellers first, and then Ms. Baumke. Mr. Cavalier, would you like to continue to serve on that one?
Yes.
Ms. Sellers, you can have that spot, and I'll just attend the meetings.
Does that work?
So moved.
Okay, so we have Mr. Milde, Mr. Cavalier, and Ms. Sellers. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Next one is the Legislative Committee, currently consisting of Ms. Sellers and Mrs. Baumke. We wish to change that one up right as we enter legislative session. I would prefer to keep it the same myself.
I'm willing to give my seat up. I think Ms. Mauer had expressed some interest in that.
I would be interested only if you're not.
All right, well, then maybe we'll just keep it the same.
Okay, do I have a motion to that effect?
Well, actually, you know what? No, I'll let you take that.
The vice chairman is doing a really good job of keeping a tally here, because we tend to get to the end of this meeting and somebody goes, "What just happened to me?"
Yeah, I'm scared.
It's not too bad right now. Okay, it's pretty balanced.
Next year, let's use bigger font.
Okay. So it sounds like Ms. Sellers would continue to serve, and Ms. Baumke would prefer Ms. Mauer takes her position?
Sure.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Seconded, please cast your vote. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next is the Joint Board, School Board Working Committee. Currently... Okay, currently, we have Ms. Sellers, Mrs. Baumke, and was Mr. Sterling.
I'd like to take a spot on that if possible.
Okay. Ms. Baumke, do you have a preference?
I have served on that for a number of years on this end and also on the school board side. I would like to continue, but if somebody else is really willing, I could step aside.
And consider Court Sterling's seat available as well.
Okay. If we don't have a third, I would...
I'll take Mr. Sterling's.
So we have Mr. Cavalier, Mr. Snellings, and Ms. Sellers said she'll stay if nobody else... And Ms. Baumke didn't want to go on unless, or you didn't want to go off unless somebody really...
Correct.
Wanted to go on. So we're okay with Cavalier, Snellings, and Sellers. Do we have a motion for that? Do we have a second?
Wait, 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 say that again?
Mr. Cavalier, Mr. Snellings, and Ms. Sellers.
Okay.
Okay, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Public Safety Committee. Currently consists of Mr. Snellings, Ms. Sellers, and Mrs. Baumke. Does anybody wish to change that one up?
I do want to continue on public safety. That was at the top of my priority list.
Mr. Chairman, once again, I've been on this committee since it started. I think I need some fresh blood on it, and I'll give up my seat.
I'd like to serve.
And that leaves Ms. Sellers to make a decision whether to stay or...
Stay, unless somebody wants it.
No.
How many do I have? I think I went off of a couple there. I don't want to end up with none, and you guys are like, "Hey, you're not doing anything." Come on, you can do that one. And Fab.
I do have my standing suggestion to whoever does end up on bylaws. I think we all know. Limit the amount of times a person can speak to this board in a given day. I'll just go on the record right now and say that. I know it's not been a popular idea, but I think it makes sense.
Okay, so back to this committee. So I only have one. I probably should do a second. That way it... Okay, so if it's okay...
Pretty much equal, all of us pretty much have two.
Great. Okay, so we would have Mrs. Baumke, Mr. Cavalier, and myself on public safety. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, I believe that's the list. Okay, next, we will have Presentations by the Public. Each member of the public who wishes to speak will have three minutes. When you come to the podium, we ask that you state your name and address. And when you begin, the lights will give you three minutes. And when the red light comes on, it's time to wrap it up. Anybody in the audience wish to speak in public comment? Hearing none, we will close Presentations by the Public. Next, we'll have Presentations and Committee Reports by Board Members.
Ms. Baumke?
Yes, I would just like to say I hope everybody had a nice holiday season over the last couple of weeks. Wanted to welcome Wendy Mauer to the board. Look forward to working with you, and welcome Jack back. Let's see, first, I wanted to thank Marcia for putting this list together that was in our stand, our add-on folder of all the committees over the last three years. I think this will be very helpful, especially on the days that some of these committees meet as we go forward. This week, I attended a finance forum down in Richmond. And actually, Nancy Collins was down there as well. If anybody is interested, there are slides on the Virginia Counties Association website. It was very interesting. Probably the most interesting person was Jim Rennebock, the gentleman with the analytical firm that has analyzed the state budget for many years. And I think the common theme out there was basically that, you know, the state has been balancing the budget on the backs of the localities, which we all know. And they really hope to increase educational funding this year. But if you're interested, please go to the website. Yesterday, I attended the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust reception up in Arlington. And that was very good to go to. And one of the budget analysts for Obama's office spoke. It was actually very interesting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Cavalier?
I'd just like to congratulate Mr. Thomas and Ms. Sellers for their, on their election for Chair and Vice Chair. Thank you.
Mrs. Mauer?
Sorry, I just want to congratulate Mr. Thomas and Ms. Sellers on their election to Chair and Vice Chair. And I also want to say that it's an absolute honor to represent the residents of Rock Hill. I know I have big shoes to fill in replacing Court Sterling, but I'm grateful to the Rock Hill voters for their faith in my ability to represent them. I also look forward to working with all of you. I have known most of you for a very long time. We've worked on a number of boards and commissions together. So I'm excited to serve in this new role in order to, you know, increase funding for schools and teachers, and redo the comprehensive plan and increase our economic base. So this is going to be a great year. And I also want to thank everybody on the staff. The transition has been absolutely wonderful. Our new Citizen Action Officer, Anthony, has done a fabulous job. I have already made progress on a number of issues that the residents brought to my attention during the campaign. So all in all, it's going to be a very, very exciting and awesome 2016. So thank you to everyone, and thanks for welcoming me.
Mr. Milliday?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Sellers?
I'll defer at this time.
Mr. Snellings?
Just want to congratulate Mr. Thomas and Ms. Sellers on their appointment or their election, and thank the rest of the board for putting up with me for the past year.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. Mr. Snellings, as I stated before, I hardly would characterize that as putting up with you. You did a superb job. You have big shoes to fill, and I'm excited to be following in your footsteps. So again, thank you to everybody. 2016 is going to be a year of challenges, like it always is. But as I look to my right and left, I think we are well positioned to tackle all the challenges ahead of us. And I know we have a great staff behind us who wants to see us succeed. And with those two things, I think we'll have a great year. Okay, with that, we go to the Report of the County Attorney.
Defer any comments, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Report of the County Administrator.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, just very quickly, these are some photographs that Mr. Smith had taken just in the last few days of Lake Moonee, which should be full if all goes well with Mother Nature and pumping out of the river, should be full before the spring. It's about four feet below being full. And as you can imagine, the last four feet have the most water in them. But really, just a beautiful spot and Northern Virginia's, Virginia's newest lake, which we look forward to offering as not just a water supply, but also as an amenity in the county. Thank you, Ms. Hollenberger. Just one item that I do need to ask the boards, a question to the board, Mr. Chairman, which is that the superintendent, and I know there's been comments or exchanges between board members and school board members, that the school board has a particular time sensitivity to a decision with respect to Moncare Elementary and the design of the Moncare Elementary School. They'd like to let a contract for an architect by the end of the month. They've asked for a meeting of the school board's finance committee with the board's Fab Committee, and just wanted to ask you all, what's your pleasure? Would you like to do that on the 19th during the regular Fab? Would you like to schedule a special meeting? And we can certainly do this outside of the board chambers, but it is a time sensitivity to begin to start on the CIP so they can keep their timeline if that's what they choose to do.
Yeah, they had expressed to me that next week is their preference. And I know if we do that, we have to have a notice out today. So I think it'd probably be best if the three members from Fab, right after we adjourn the meeting, get together, look at our calendars, and throw a date across the street. And hopefully, with a targeted notice, then that today, if that's okay.
Thank you, sir. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number four is to schedule the board's annual planning meeting.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we did have consensus. Ms. Hollenberger pulled the board on February 5th and 6th. That's a Friday and a Saturday. All seven of you all indicated that that would work. We would anticipate beginning somewhere in the afternoon that Friday. And I'll certainly work with Chairman and Vice Chairman on the details of the agenda and location and logistics.
Okay, great, so no action is required on that. We did things a little bit out of order because of the organizational meeting. But the next thing is to accept the additions and deletions that were presented previously. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda with those additions? Motioned and seconded, please cast your votes. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next up is the Consent Agenda. Does any member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda for discussion? Hearing none, entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Moved by Ms. Sellers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Baumke. Please cast your votes. Tally the votes. That motion passes seven to zero. Number seven was an add-on. This is a resolution limiting terms on boards, authorities, committees, and commissions. It should be in your add-on packet. And Mr. Snellings brought this forward. Mr. Snellings?
I'll defer to Mr. Cavalier, Mr. Chairman.
I'll be happy to speak to this. I believe that since we have imposed upon ourselves the rule that Chairman can only serve two years consecutively, then I think that should also apply to our committee structure. And we've had some very long-serving committee chairs, and sometimes that takes a life upon itself there. And I think sometimes the committee itself can do itself a favor by electing a new chair. And I don't think it can hurt, basically. So I'd like to see this passed, and I'd like to move for this resolution.
Question?
I second.
Do I have a motion, a second? Question from Mr. Milliday?
You say committees, you're just talking about our committees?
No, all of the BDA.
The citizen committees.
All of them. Do we have the authority, like for the BZA, for instance? Or I'm just curious, or the EDA quasi?
I think these are the ones that we appoint totally, like the Parks and Rec Commission, like TCC, that are completely appointed by the board.
This is not affect the subcommittees of the board.
Yes.
It does.
It does, yes.
The problem there, I've been chairman a couple, as long as I've been, I've been chairman a couple of years on community and economic development. The problem, of course, is with only three members instead of your typical seven, your pool from which to choose, you're going to end up sometimes with two new people that have never been there stepping in and being mandated as Chair. I don't know, sometimes, that's likely to happen. Do you want to put an exception in for that? Don't you think someone should have been there a day before they become Chair?
Well, I guess you could put in an exception. I don't see a problem with that. But the reality is, we've got some of these people out here that have been Chair for five, 10, 15 years. We just had one group, guy was Chair for 34 years, my God. We've got to put some limits on it.
Yeah, I don't...
It gets stale. And if you want to put a stipulation in that our committees, the three-person committees, we only, we cannot rotate if there are two new members, I don't have a problem with that. But we need to put some limits in. Let's do that.
Mr. Chair, I think we ought to do this uniformly and fairly across the board and make all committees that we appoint, including our own standing committees, part of this new rule.
Mr., but his caveat makes, kind of fixes the problem of only having a three-member committee versus your typical... All these other ones have seven members minimum. And it's almost impossible that they're going to be all be new. I think you need to have an exception for, you shouldn't ask someone to be Chair that's never stepped foot in a committee before.
Okay, Mrs. Baumke?
I kind of agree with Mr. Cavalier and Mr. Snellings. I think that, you know, change is always good. And when somebody is elected to a position, they're accountable to the people. And even though you might have two brand-new board members, they bring fresh ideas to the table. And just because they don't have this experience and the background knowledge, they'll get there very quickly if they're Chair. So I think it's good to make it universal across the table, and it changes a good thing.
All right, well, I'm going to defer, I mean, I see that, bottom line is, we're doing this for the taxpayers. It's Stafford County, we're in those committees, spending money and making big decisions and dropping some brand-new person that maybe just got elected who's never stepped foot in a committee and is the person in charge. To me, it doesn't make good sense for the people that elected us, but that's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. County Attorney?
I think the proper form would be, since we are really directing this reso to the BACCs that we appoint, that we also make further provision down the road for application to this board member committees through the bylaws. So I think this is something that should, for proper form purposes, be revisited and included in the bylaws. I don't see a problem going forward today, although the language, as you have it now, may not be interpreted to really reach board member committees, because I think it says BACCs.
Right, I did not read it that way at all.
You read it to the contrary?
Yeah, I didn't see anything about the actual board standing committees.
That's not addressed specifically. But is it your interpretation, Mr. Chairman, that the reso would include board member committees?
It sounds like the original maker of the motion wants to add that. I haven't asked the seconder yet if that's okay.
That would be good for clarification if you had it in there. And then I think then we can follow with the bylaws and include what we need there. So it's just kind of belt and suspenders to get it in proper form. So I think we'd be good.
Okay. So, Mr. Cavalier, it sounds like you want to add the board standing committees, and I think that's the technical term we've been using for a while, to be included here. And also, I would say that if there was a legal reason, like Mr. Milliday pointed out, for BZA, obviously, we're not going to override any higher legal guidance. So I think we're okay there as well. Ms. Mauer, you seconded the motion. Are you okay with that addition? Okay.
Just for clarity, I kind of overlooked that it wasn't included on the standing committees. But I believe it should be, because the standing committees either have two or three members usually. And that group in and of itself is the vote for the Chair. And they can make a clear choice, I believe, for Chairman.
So what you said was kind of contrary. What you said is that we should have to decide on our own.
What I meant is that we, it should apply to all committees.
Okay. Do we have any further comments on the motion? Okay, we do not. So we have a motion that's been properly seconded, and we will cast our votes, please. Tally the vote. The motion passes five to two. Okay, I believe we have... I believe we have a closed session item. Ms. Sellers, could you read this resolution, please? I've been reading it for a couple of years, so somebody else needs to get used to that.
What am I reading here? "I'd like to offer a motion, a resolution to authorize closed meeting, whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for discussion and consideration of the appointment or promotion of specific public officers, appointees, or employees. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code..." Do I have to read that? 2.2-3711A1, "Such discussion may occur in a closed meeting."
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Mauer. Cast your vote, please. Tally the vote.